Roll call. Vidla?
Here.
Phillips?
Here.
Stricker?
Here.
Solomon?
Here.
Join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For public information, a copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is available for review. Notice of changes in the agenda by the city clerk. Additions may not be made to this agenda less than 24 hours before the beginning of the meeting unless added under item five of this agenda.
No changes.
Citizens with business not scheduled on the agenda as required by state law, no matter may be considered under this item unless council determines that the matter requires emergency action. Have any emergency action? Closed session. Council reserves the right to enter into closed session if deemed necessary if the item is on the agenda as per section eighty-four, fourteen, ten of the Nebraska revised statutes. Public comments. The purpose of this agenda item is to allow for public comment of items for potential discussion at future council meetings. Comments brought to the council are for information only. The council will not take any action on the item except for referring it to staff to address replacement on a future council agenda. This comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Have any public comments? Okay. Consent calendar. Items in the consent calendar are proposed for adoption by one action for all items unless any member of the council requests that an item be considered separately. Any questions or comments on the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent.
I'll second.
Okay.
Kim?
Hey.
Phillips?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
Stricker?
Yes.
Vidla?
Yes. Claim removed from consent calendar. Council to consider and take action on the claim from Intralinks in the amount of eighteen thousand three hundred and seven dollars and fifty-four cents.
I need to declare a conflict on that one.
Okay. Need a motion to approve that?
Make a motion to approve the conflict.
Yes.
In a second.
I'll second.
Okay. You have a question?
I had a question about that one. We'll approve that, yes.
Okay.
Solomon?
Yes.
Stricker?
Yes.
Vidla?
Yes. Okay. Council to consider and take action on the claim from Intralinks in the amount of eighteen thousand three hundred and seven dollars and fifty-four cents.
It was just a question on the software. I think it was on a history package that was the most substantial on the list. I was just gonna see what that one is for.
The software, I don't know about, but I think there was a server. I thought there was.
Maybe that's what it was, Mrs.
Yeah, there was a server for the GIS stuff.
Okay, that's probably what it was.
That'll be the big item.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. That's it.
Okay. May I get a motion to approve that?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Okay.
Stricker?
Yes.
Vidla?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
Okay, financial report. Council to receive the December twenty twenty-four financial report.
Evening, Mayor, Council, and desire Finance Director. I'll start on the first page there. I'll start at that bottom number, the negative nine hundred and eighty-seven thousand, the gray column. That's the total change in cash from October to December this year. I don't take a lot of stock into that at the beginning of the year. The first three months are usually a lot of expenses and not a lot of revenue. We don't see property tax until the big chunk comes in May and September. So you don't see a lot of that. That's the, like, the TIF, bond accounts, prime example of that, where it's negative two hundred and forty-four thousand. We got the money in September, paid it in October, so across fiscal years. That's just kind of what happens with that. And then, you know, always in the beginning of the year, we have insurance, which is a big one. Bond payments are due in December typically, and that's the principal and the interest in those. So those ones are always bigger, too. So I don't take a lot of stock into that. We're sitting pretty good overall. The next page, the month-to-month, December doesn't have a ton that happens in it. We did transfers for the departments, so the transfer over to cemetery, GIS, and stormwater. And that's why you see the cemetery perpetual care at, you know, negative one hundred and seventy-two, because they do a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar transfer twice a year to cover cemetery expenses. But overall, you see on the monthly change in cash there at the bottom, though, is a positive nine hundred and fifty-one thousand, so trending in the right direction. And then the next page is the expenditures compared to the budget. We're twenty-five percent through the fiscal year through December. So you typically like to see all the expenditures around twenty-five percent or less, which, with the exception of the cemetery perpetual care fund, everything is. And then on the revenue side, you typically like to see them around twenty-five percent. And usually, you know, like, the, in enterprise funds, environmental services, wastewater water, electric, those are all kind of sitting right around that twenty-five percent or higher, which is where you want them to be, so. And then the last page just kind of shows the departments how they're doing with their expenditures compared to the revenue through the year, so. Any questions?
How are we doing on sales tax revenues? Is it coming back up?
So this month, we, I just got January's on Friday, which would have been November's sales tax receipt, and we were up twenty percent compared to last fiscal year. So trending in the right direction there after kind of a slow start, so.
For just the last month, December?
It would have been November. Those were, it's two months back, so, yeah, so the sales tax was from the month of November that we received, and then we get it in January. So that, I, I don't know if that has anything to do with the mall and the new stores that happened there, if that was kind of around that transition. Maybe people did Christmas shopping a little bit earlier. Typically, February is a good month because December is the month that you receive that sales tax, but January looked really good, so.
That's the best month we've ever had.
Yeah.
The, this, which one was?
November?
This, this month's sales tax receipt.
I think it's.
Store sold at the mall.
So, yeah, that probably had something to do with it, and then, you know, we're right, right around that Christmas time, too, when people are starting to do a little Christmas shopping in November and stuff, too. But, yeah, we were just shy of eight hundred thousand dollars for sales tax received, which was, if you go back ten years, at least is the biggest number on that spreadsheet, so.
I know Mrs. Spencer was hanging out at Hobby Lobby.
I think we changed the rates on the water. I think this was this summer. Is it?
Yeah, that's, we typically do that every budget cycle, so that takes effect on October one.
Oh, okay.
Is when we do that. And so, yeah, so that, those rates have been in effect, and typically you don't see, like, the water revenue, you wouldn't really see that much. I don't know a lot of people that water in their grass right now, but they want an ice rink. I suppose they could.
And that's the revenues, the enterprise revenues you were talking about, being twenty-five percent.
Yeah, which is good, because typically, like, when I came from Sydney or whatever, we would only see, like, fifteen percent at this time of the year, twenty-five percent through the fiscal year, and then, you know, you get to June, July, August, and those months are typically a lot higher, so. So it's a nice change of pace to see them where they're supposed to be now, so.
Okay.
Lynn, do you want to say anything about the audit?
Yeah, so I met with the auditors today. We had a, about an hour-long team's meeting or whatever. I think, Betsy, you probably got an email from them today for the fraud question there and stuff, so we're gonna do field work next week. Will be the stuff, so I've been getting a ton. They requested a ton of stuff, and so I've, I've been getting a lot of stuff to them. Shayla's been helping me out a lot with that as well, too, getting them. It's gonna be a transition period for sure, going to a new auditor. They're gonna ask a ton of stuff, and so we're getting, giving them a ton of information, trying to get them everything they need, but they're also, they've got a new auditor in charge this year, it's her first year, and then their senior auditor, it's his first year being a senior auditor, too, so there's some grace, I guess, on both sides, which is good, so. But, yeah, I feel pretty good about it, and we're targeting the March seventeenth meeting for the final audit report, and they didn't think that was gonna be an issue at all, so.
What was the company we went?
Bergen KDV is the audit firm, and they are a subsidiary of Creative Planning.
Oh, cool.
So that's the email that you get from them, they say Creative Planning, but they're Bergen KDV is the audit firm itself, so. Any other questions?
Any questions for Lynn?
Next, Lynn.
Okay. Um, public hearings? Counts, do I need to, do we need to approve the financials? Okay, can I have a motion to approve the financials?
I'll move to approve. Second.
Any other questions, comments? Okay.
Phillips?
Yes.
Vidla?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
Stricker?
Yes.
Okay, public hearings. Council to conduct a public hearing set for this date at six PM for the purpose of reviewing and obtaining comment on a redevelopment plan submitted by Northfield Retirement Communities Incorporated for the Northfield Retirement Communities Garden Homes Redevelopment Project. So open the public hearing.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Council, Shariaa Deserza, Economic Development Director. So you have the Northfield Retirement Communities Garden Homes Project in front of you this evening. They are requesting tax increment financing with eligible expenses for TIF at just over a million dollars. So I'm going to go over the standards of review for the tax increment financing, and then Shayna is here this evening to answer any questions that you might have about the project afterwards. So first, we have to make sure that it is in conformity with our comprehensive plan. So this project site is zoned as an R1 single-family, which includes two family dwellings as a principal permitted use, so no zoning changes are needed. According to the comprehensive plan, the project site is in the northeast district, so with the additional landscaping and setback from the street, the project will provide a good transition between the higher volume areas with the commercial zones with the mall and then the lower intensity residential areas to the west. So it's in line with our comprehensive plan. The Planning Commission and the CRA reviewed the plan with respect to its conformity to our comp plan and made a positive recommendation for that. And those meetings just took place last week, but we did have a first round to review all of the preliminaries before that as well. Number two for our standards of review is to make sure that it's in conformity to our community development law, so we must also consider whether the plan conforms to the legislative declarations and determinations set forth in the community development law. Those declarations include, among other things, that this area is blighted and substandard, and the conditions are beyond remedy and control solely by regulatory process and the exercise of the police power. It cannot be dealt with effectively by ordinary operations of private enterprise without the aids of tax increment financing. The proposed project is an area that the city council has designated as blighted and substandard. It is, this particular area has been blighted in some standard, substandard for quite some time now. It's actually number seven in our blighted, um, substandard areas, so it's been on there for a long time, so it meets that requirement. Next on the standards of review is the BUT-4 test. Because this plan proposes the use of tax increment financing, in order to approve the plan, you must determine that the plan would not be economically feasible or occur in the blighted and substandard area without the use of TIF. This requirement is addressed on page three of the plan that you have in front of you. The CRA also analyzed this issue and made this finding as set forth in the resolution. And then lastly is the cost-benefit analysis. You must also analyze, and in the order to approve the plan, make a finding that the costs and benefits of the project, including costs and benefits to other affected political subdivisions, the economy of the community, and the demand of the public and private services, having been analyzed by the city council, are in the long-term best interest of the community. And the CRA adopted this cost-benefit analysis, which is in your packet. Any questions on that stuff?
For Sharia? Okay, I will invite Shayna up here just to kind of give you a lowdown on the project.
Hello.
Hello.
I'm sure you guys have all seen over here, we did start the project by building two of the nine duplex units that were in the plan. This plan was actually drawn up when we bought the land back in the early nineties, and we've had these blueprints forever to continue the project, so it would be a cul-de-sac that would go around. There'd be nine duplexes, eighteen units, and those would be housing for the seniors in the community. They could buy life care, and then that would open up houses also in the community for others due to the housing shortages. So that's kind of been the plan, and the TIF would help with all the infrastructure and stuff and building the cul-de-sac, so. Do you guys have any questions or?
I do have a question, and I realize that it'll seem to be in the weeds a little, and I don't know exactly how to approach it, but it's only based on my years of experience and my pre-retirement career. Is, when I looked at the plans, and it's really to base it, the question's based on making sure that you have reasonable and accurate number for the TIF request, is, again, I'm not the person, it's not my role, but it was pretty glaring to me, that the water plan is probably not adequate in terms of fire hydrants for firefighting. And I asked the fire department if they've had a preliminary look at this, and they did not. So I would encourage somebody to do that, so that it's, you make sure you have all the right numbers and stuff, and so it seems weird saying this preemptively, but I'd just like to have you go in with your eyes wide open.
Okay, yeah, and David Schaaf is on our board, and he was the engineer from that brought that up, but I will make sure I mention that to them.
Well, not to me, to the, they apparently never see that, so.
All right, thank you.
But there is some level of value to speaking with them as you're developing budgets for the role.
All right.
Is there any existing infrastructure there, water lines or sewer line?
We did start the project, so they did do the initial with the electric and the lines, and so some of it is already there, and then this will continue on.
And when do you project you'll start, and when do you hope to be done?
They want to start as soon as we can, so as soon as they can break ground, and then it is a phased project over a couple of years. So as we, as we get some sold, it's gonna keep going around. And I do think they explained at the last meeting, you know, there is a timeline to be able to use all the TIF financing in such a period of time, so I think we have, like, two years or so to get it completed.
Mr. Ainsault, you guys had a positive recommendation from your office, didn't you, for the project?
Well, we don't really make recommendations, but we think it's a good deal for the community, I would say that, but the CRA did look at the cost-benefit analysis part of it because of the limited impact on current services and the fact that the taxes will still be collected, and then finally, the fact that we notify all political subdivisions and we have no response, no objections to it, that this is definitely something that the community should probably look at very strongly, and it's good to clean up the blighted and substandard areas that have been in the community for many, many years.
In your plans, you had, and there's a small portion there about sidewalks. I assume you're gonna extend the sidewalk along.
Yeah, we have to go all the way around.
Circle Drive.
All the way around.
Okay, that was the one I just want to clarify.
So it mentions fences in there. Do you have a sense of what those, where those, the fence will be?
It'll probably follow the same fences that they have there on the back of the duplexes now. It's back so far, and it goes around the back of all the duplexes, so.
So for ending circle and twenty-fourth, there'll be fencing? I ask that because it further exacerbates the hydrant issue that I saw.
Other questions?
I think it'll fit a big need for the community. I think there's a lot of man for that.
I think it's a great opportunity to fill in over there, and I think you do have interest in some of the future.
We've already, yes, we've actually, I was gonna say, to clarify, yes, we've sold one already, one of the four we're gonna start building right away.
And pardon me if I've missed it, is this an age-restricted community?
Yes, fifty-five.
And it's an opportunity for people to live not in a congregate setting?
Yes.
It's more independent, so.
Because, yeah, because right now we have the apartments, and then they're, we're filling up pretty good on the apartments, but this gives another option for, say, couples or some younger that would like to move in and not, you know, live in an apartment building, so.
And it helps us with our housing, too.
There was one question, someone who brought up in the community with me, and that was if they're in the, in those independent facilities, they still need to go over the main building for food? Is that gonna be an issue with mobility and, as they get older?
So far, the four, four of them are occupied, and they have been coming over if they, we do offer, if someone is sick or something, we'll deliver the meal. This winter, we were kind of curious how the winter was gonna go, but it's been such a mild winter, we haven't ran into that, but we have had to deliver if someone was sick or ill, we'll deliver the meals, and moving forward, it is something that I would like to get in to a process to where we can just deliver all the time, but that's getting staff and everything organized and lined up, but.
So that question begged another question of me, so are these, they're duplexes, are they like, single fam, do they have cooking facilities inside?
Oh, yeah, they're just like.
Just the option to go over there?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it offers, we offer one meal a day, housekeeping, utilities, all that with the, with the life care.
Questions, huh?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other comments, questions? Okay, do we have any exhibits or anything we need to?
Just the plan? Nope.
Okay. So I will close the public hearing. Resolutions and ordinances. Council to consider action on a resolution to approve the redevelopment plan submitted by Northfield Retirement Communities Incorporated for the Northfield Retirement Communities Garden Homes Redevelopment Project. So this is just the resolution to approve the plan that you just heard? Any other questions with the TIF?
Mayor, I'll make a motion, or a motion to approve the resolution based on the findings from, and recommendations from Planning Commission, the Community Redevelopment Authority, and all of the legal requirements.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, Kim?
Vidla?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Stricker?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think that's a wonderful addition to our housing as well. Okay, petitions, communications, and public input. Council introduction to Riverside Discovery Center Executive Director Kai Hodgson.
Yes. Kai, Mayor and Council, Mayor and I met Kai last Wednesday and very impressed. You know, normally, I don't think I would have invited somebody this soon, but Kai is very composed, and I think it's a great opportunity for him to introduce himself to you. I was very impressed, so Kai, would you tell, talk a little bit about yourself?
Thank you very much for that, Kevin, and thank you very much to everyone for having me here today. Some, some of you have met before, the rest of you, I'm sure I'll get to know you, but I think based off of the time, in one hour and forty-nine minutes, I would have been in Scotts Bluff for a week. And, yeah, it's been a great time so far in the community. One thing that I have noticed is that everyone everywhere has got some story about the zoo or someone that they know that worked at the zoo, or some crazy story of when there was some animal somewhere. So, yeah, it's just been an amazing experience so far, and I look forward to getting more of those stories and becoming a bit more embedded in the community and trying to see how we can help you guys and you can help us, and how we can make everyone's lives happier, and, yeah. Thank you very much for having me. I look forward to seeing you at the zoo.
Kai, could you tell a little bit about your experience?
Oh, sorry, yeah. So I'm from South Africa, hence the accent, if you haven't picked up on it. I basically grew up around animals, so it was kind of the family business. Kangal Wildlife Ranch down in Oats in South Africa, so grew up being chased around by little tiger cubs and little cheetah cubs and all of that. So when it was time for school, I'd go off to school in my hometown. When it was time for holidays, I'd get in the car and my parents would drive me over to the zoo, which was four hours away, and that's kind of where I really started getting involved in the industry. I used to bother the keepers there and try and, they'd drag me along and give me all their stuff that they didn't want to do. That's what I would end up doing for the day. And then when it was time for university, I did a Bachelor of Science in biological sciences, so majoring in zoology and botany. And, yeah, they, after I moved, moved back to Oats, where I started working full-time in the facility, and, yeah, I was then put on a kind of management track to learn the business and, and look at taking it over one day. So I basically worked in, in almost every single department that you get in a, in a zoological facility, so, yeah, a lot of learning that I've done in the last couple of years, and, yeah, I, that kind of culminated with me beginning their sustainability department, which basically addressed their carbon footprint, and also heading up their nonprofit organization, so the Cheetah Preservation Foundation. I was one of the three directors of that organization for, my tenure was short, was cut short by this, so, yeah, yeah, we basically specialized in the breeding of cheetahs and other endangered species, and that culminated basically last year with the release of a cheetah into a game reserve that was in collaboration with the Metapopulation Initiative, which is basically a management program for cheetahs out in the wild. So, yeah, that's my experience, and that's what kind of brought me here, and like I say, I'm excited to get involved and see what we can, we can do out at the zoo.
Nice to meet you.
Awesome. Nice to meet you guys. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Council reports. This item is intended for council members to update and inform other council members of meetings attended since the last city council meeting.
I would like to introduce James Guzman. He's gonna be a member of our parks board, so, counsel, James Guzman. So his bio was in your packet, so, James, anything?
I, if you. No, I'm James Guzman. I, Jerry very happily encouraged me to do this, so I enjoy being here with you guys. Just quick background, I'm from, Mr. Solomon, I'm from Gearing, I went to Gearing. Same height, though. And then I came back from, from college in Carney, and now I'm back here with my family. The cemetery board, we lost a daughter in January of twenty-twenty-two, she was still born, so it's a little bit more connection there, so I just greatly appreciate the opportunity. That's pretty much all I have for you guys.
Well, thanks for helping.
Other reports from anyone?
I met with Kai on Thursday, I think.
Sound a lot right now.
Yeah, yeah. So I talked with Kevin and having him come do a presentation in the future, but he's just getting his feet under him, so I think we're gonna give him a little time to get oriented and get going, but I'm glad you came over. This is kind of the roughest time of the year to come over here, but it will get better, so it does get better, and we have a lot of hope that he'll help get things moving and turned around, and we're excited to have you here.
Yeah.
Other reports, anybody?
Facilities tour on Thursday. Yes. We'll leave here at nine o'clock, Scott and Jerry, so if somebody else in the future wants to do that, I'll be glad to show them around, so.
What time on Tuesday?
It's Thursday, and it's, we'll leave here at nine, but we're full.
You're gonna coach the Metro?
I'll catch the Metro.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because they've only got to see, you know, a fraction of everything. I'd like to see everything, it'd be nice.
Yeah. Yeah, we're gonna get out and go in and look at everything, so.
So since Sharia is here, there was a, the Western Nebraska Economic Development has a meeting and then a work session, a meeting, and they talked, the last time was a work session, they're starting to plan the government job expo designed mainly for youth and summer jobs, but hopefully they can expand that into, beyond that at some point in time. And I, so I don't really know, it, it sounds like that they're gonna break it up into geographic areas where kids would likely go and not have to commute too long to go to work, like Scotts Bluff, Gearing, Terrytown, Mitchell Moro, have, have them at different locations instead of trying one location, Kimball and Sidney maybe, and Berden Bridgeport, anyway, those type of things, and so the, for the participation, there was, be minimal costs, and this is where I guess I'd lean on Sharia to know what they do, it's, I think it's just probably lunch as near as I can tell for those that come and present stuff.
Yes, and this is the first kind of government day that I think WOD is looking at potentially putting together. TCD does their, they go around and they kind of partner with schools and different.
Career camps.
Career camps, yes.
They have their career camps, so this is kind of an extension off of that, just focusing on the government jobs, so we want just the youth to know kind of what the city has to offer in terms of jobs that they can actually come back and work at. So I think it's very rough right now. I don't think we have much of an outline, but I think lunch was kind of the only expense, and we talked about maybe a mock city council meeting.
That'd be cool.
Just getting the youth encouraged to volunteer and serve on councils and boards.
And I might have said this last time, so I think it's the, so like, that career cab, they do sophomores in high school, they focus on those, and then this is juniors, and the idea is to maybe, yeah, people talk a lot about lifeguards and parks workers.